You're all gonna, you're all gonna pull muscle because you're not used to looking left.
Howdy.
How are you doing?
I'm excellent. I'm. I'm sensational.
You're so, is that the new, that's our new word for the day? Sensational. Okay, we're just making everybody out so well, right? No, bacon, you're just our sensational.
I did not say I was sensational.
I don't think it is.
I'm okay.
Fight in the good fight. That's what I do.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
House coming your way. You're already up there.
I ran across to the. I thought we were waiting for Tom. Go ahead and.
No, Tom.
No, Tom. All righty. Come on. Come on. See? Val was getting pretty scared up here. You can say a prayer off the cuff, come on. All right.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five work session. Thank you all for being here this evening. We appreciate you. The first item on our agenda is our invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our city manager, Felicia Donnelly. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come together this evening with grateful hearts for the opportunity to serve our community. As we meet to discuss charitable contributions, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Help us to see the needs of others with compassion, to listen with open minds, and to act with fairness and generosity. May every decision that is made reflect the values of kindness, stewardship, and care for our neighbors. Bless the work of the council, city staff, and the organizations that serve those in need. Grant us patience, humility, and unity as we seek to do what is right for all. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I feel very strange right now because I'm sitting next to Councilwoman Swager and it's just weird. We've never done that before. Councilmember Knapp is here. He has graciously sequestered himself as he might be ill, so he is here.
Oh, definitely ill.
Okay, okay. I was just, you know, trying to, trying to be. And our city clerk is right down here in front of us. So on the agendas, oh, excuse me. First item on the agenda is our citizens' open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council? Have five minutes. Please give your name and address. Come on up, Tom.
Hello, Tom O'Shea, two eight Lake Charles Court. I just wanted to say, I noticed that the Oldsmar in Orbit signs have got put up and the one at the library's got turned around so you're not standing in the garden to read it. I thought that was really cool that you guys got those back put up. And then I got the magazine in. I saw there was a two-page spread of all the awards the city has gotten. If you guys keep going the way you're going, you're gonna have a centerfold of awards. It's gonna be amazing.
Yeah. I like the centerfold.
I just want to say, last meeting, you guys had a fun, a good discussion about the triple RF plant that the county wants to do. I really appreciate your decision because we already do our own wastewater. I just want to say that if we do need to increase our regulations or whatever we need to do, I'm for raising my taxes and make sure we're in compliance for whatever we need to do with the bio-waste, solid waste. And also, I believe next week, next meeting is the, across the street, they'll be back to talk about another plan for downtown, I believe.
I'm not certain. Watch the tentative agenda.
Yeah, it was on the tentative agenda.
Is it on the tentative agenda? I think it might be changed to November.
Oh, it's gonna go to November.
Yeah, stay tuned on that.
Previous discussion, I really like that there was a possibility of reducing parking for maybe golf carts or other things. So I know the city's kind of invested in trying to be multimodal. And I think it'd be valuable to let them have less parking requirements just to be a better downtown feel than just apartment buildings. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Tom. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council?
Tom really wants us to take his money.
He really, you know, Tom, if you want to come with a weekly donation, Felicia will take it. Check, cash, any, anything. Your comments are always welcome and very insightful and thoughtful. Thank you, Tom. Seeing none, we will close the open forum. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the presentation of charitable donation requests for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. So. In our agenda packets, we have eight charitable donation requests from the following organizations. Clearwater for Youth, Holiday Sharing Fund slash Kids Pedal Power, Mattie Williams Neighborhood Family Center, Neighborly Care Network, Oldsmar Cares, Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce Special Event Support, Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Education Foundation. A total of sixty thousand dollars has been funded for the aid to government slash private agencies line item zero zero one, one one zero, five one one, three zero, eight two dash eight zero in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Following presentations by the requesting organizations, the council will discuss the allocation of the available funds. Obviously, I think it goes without saying that the amount of available funds is less than the requests that have been made. And the proposed allocations that we find consensus on tonight will be considered for approval at the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five council meeting. These are, they just happen to be in alphabetical order, which I assume is as good as any. So we want to make our way through. The first presentation would then be for Clearwater for Youth. I'll give you a little bit of time. Don't make me have her set the fire alarm on everybody, okay? The fire alarm will go off after five minutes, but I think we can make some reasonable presentations.
Won't be the first fire alarm on me, I think, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and council staff. Kevin Dunbar, I'm the executive director of Clearwater for Youth, or as we actually operate under C F Y Pinellas. C F Y Pinellas has been around since nineteen seventy-two, making sure that children can play sports. That's our, that's our primary purpose. In twenty twenty-one, we took a significant shift in just not providing programs and activities within Clearwater, but doing all of Pinellas County. And that has included Oldsmar, which is what brings me here today. We are a five oh one C three, and we have an endowment that's large enough that every dollar that is provided to us goes directly to supporting a child because our operating costs are paid for by our endowment. Just as an example, last night alone, we were in Canal Park with the, the North Pinellas Panthers. Happened to have a buddy of mine with me, Coach John Gruden. And we interacted with about a hundred and fifty of the youth of the community to do a big check presentation because we help fund football helmets, cheer uniforms, as well as football uniforms. This year alone, we have provided over forty thousand dollars in funding to programs like Oldsmar Little League, Oldsmar with North Pinellas Panthers. In addition to that, we do college scholarships, and we also provide water safety as our three pillars. Two of our scholarship winners this year were Oldsmar residents. That was over ten thousand dollars. So as you can see, we go from Tarpon Springs all the way to South St. Pete. And each of the communities has participated as they saw fit. We are not attempting to give a greedy submittal at all because this year we'll probably do about fifty thousand dollars with the support in, in Oldsmar. And we're just requesting five thousand dollars or about ten to fifteen percent of the overall giving. And as I said, since every dollar we generate goes directly to a child, your contribution will go directly to supporting the youth of Oldsmar. I know you got a lot on your agenda, so I don't, I don't need to keep doing the, the dance for you. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dunbar?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Holiday Sharing Fund, Kids Pedal Power.
How you doing? Mark Howe, Upper Tampa Bay Chamber, Kids Pedal Power Holiday Sharing Fund. I'm here for Holiday Sharing Fund, not for Kids Pedal Power part of it. Holiday Sharing Fund provides bikes at Christmas time for the residents of Oldsmar. We do about thirty bikes a year. We did some bikes last year with hurricane. You know, people that lost their bikes during hurricanes. So we're, we do helmets, bikes, and locks for kids in Oldsmar. So we're asking for three thousand dollars to cover the cost for the bikes. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much, Mark.
I keep forgetting Andrew's over there. It's like scaring me.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Wave a little flag. Okay. Next, we have Mattie Williams Neighborhood Family Center.
Thanks so much, council, Mayor Gannon, staff. I'm David Hale. I'm the executive director of the Mattie Williams Neighborhood Family Center. We are the neighborhood center for Oldsmar, Safety Harbor, and Eastern Clearwater, which means about fifty percent of our budget comes from your Juvenile Welfare Board of Pinellas County. That funding is for serving families with children under the age of eighteen. But because we're also the neighborhood centers for all the neighbors, we do a lot of other work as well. So the grant request before you is the same that you've seen in prior years. We're hoping to continue that work. It helps us serve individuals who may be unhoused, or seniors who may be single, or folks whose children may be grown, and all the folks who otherwise aren't supported by juvenile welfare funding. Primarily, we run the food pantry for, you know, unfortunately, growing numbers of folks. Our fiscal year ended on September thirty, so I just got the report. And food pantry visits, we wanted every Thursday as a drive-through. We're over twelve percent growth over the year. These are not numbers that you like to see grow. In particular, in Oldsmar, our growth was a little higher, twenty percent. We're now up to eight hundred and sixty families here, which represents a total of twenty-eight hundred, over twenty-eight hundred individuals that are coming through the food pantry every week. What's helpful about the food pantry is it's an introduction to the other services we provide. Our real muscle is our family support. So we have two case managers on staff. They're supervised by our program director. When we meet people through food pantry, it helps establish some trust. We get them to talk to us about what's going on at home. And that's how we're able to diagnose and, and start case managing to help people break those cycles of poverty. We really want to get them off the food pantry line if we can. But, but because of budgets and price of food right now, that's where we're seeing most folks. And we work with them, our family support, to do budget counseling, to try to figure out if they're earning enough, to try to figure out if there's ways we can help them on their expenses. I do want to share something we're really proud of this last year. We're working here with some of you all and also in Safety Harbor to help rehome a lot of the families that were displaced from the hurricanes. That was noticed by the Juvenile Welfare Board. And as of last summer, we are the family support initiative provider for Oldsmar, Safety Harbor, and Eastern Clearwater. So that's a really big deal. Typically, F S I is only distributed out of the Juvenile Welfare Board. But they've empowered us to have direct access to the program. Since we've done that, we have rehomed over two dozen families under that program. It pays for everything, moving expenses, first and last month's rent, security deposits, if you've lost things to hurricane. And will be announced soon that that program is expanding to also help with other household expenses like utilities. So we're really proud to get that. It was a lot of hard work, and since we've been running it, we've been able to help a lot of families. Any other que, oh, I should also, cannot mention that we also are after-school program. We, we help alleviate some childcare costs. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Dave?
I do, yeah. How many, you mentioned the family support initiative, rehoming the families emergency-wise. Do you have how many Oldsmar residents you guys were able to help?
Out of the two dozen? That's a, a good question that I should know. I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's.
Okay, I just was curious if you had the figures.
I don't.
Okay, that's okay. Do you guys provide utility support for Oldsmar residents as well?
Yes. So that's a, a big part of this grant. I believe it's ten thousand of it is earmarked for utility assistance. That is very much like the food pantry in that it's a great way to get people to come and meet with our case managers. And again, we, we try to have as much impact as we can. So something we're looking at in the next year is that everybody coming in for that kind of utility assistance could probably benefit from our financial coaching. And so we've just got a new deal with Achieve a Credit Union to provide free financial coaching to folks same day. So it's my goal that everybody who's seeking that assistance would get it, but also we could use it to help get them to meet with a coach and take a good look at their budget.
All I had. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you.
Next on our list, we have Neighborly Care Network.
Hi, I'm David Lamacham, the executive director at Neighborly Care Network. You may or may not know Neighborly just by name. We do the, say the same speech all the time because people know Meals on Wheels, they don't necessarily know Neighborly. Neighborly has a fleet of fifty vehicles buzzing around, Pinellas County taking seniors to doctor's appointments, grocery shopping, food pantries, wherever they need to, wherever they need to get to. Neighborly also provides over half a million home-delivered meals with over a thousand volunteers that we have on an annual basis. We operate three adult daycare centers for people with dementia, not so much with the people with dementia, but their family members who are often their caregivers who are still going to work every day. Much of this is funded by the federal government, but they have requirement for everything of a ten percent match that we do, which is what we've asked for in previous years to the council. So this year, and actually, our request of sixty-five hundred dollars approximately this year, and that was, that was math error because what we actually provided was seventy-three thousand dollars of service. So the, we were above that, but our request was less than that, so we'll honor what we initially did. So we've been here since nineteen sixty-six. This year will be, this coming year will be our sixtieth year in operation in Pinellas County. We were the first adult daycare provider in the United States, and we're the first recognized home-delivered meals provider in the United States. So seniors coming here in the sixties started to tip the scale for moving forward in what we need to do in senior care. Neighborly is, again, very committed to this community. We provide services to every community, and we, we ask every municipality to support us in whatever way they can. Many do, some don't. That's my job to try to work on that over the coming year. And again, that's why we've been, we've been blessed with our relationship with Oldsmar, with the city, and the support you've provided us over the years. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. I did the little thing that was just packed around was a mail, a mailer that was gonna go out, which is just a request for any of you to chat a little bit more over a cup of coffee or bring you to a dining site or go on a meal delivery, even just two or three meals at, at ten thirty in the morning is, is kind of a, a great experience for, for people to do if you've not done it. So we'd like to welcome you to do that. Thank you very much. I don't know if you have questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Um, I do.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
No, sorry. I was trying to look and think at the same time. Okay. I see here that you have twenty-six individuals approximately being served. Do you know of that amount, how many are, like, what the breakdown is between those that you're providing meals to versus providing care to, like, senior?
Yes, yeah. Of the, of the twenty-six, twenty-six res, it's only, it's literally only this zip code of, of Oldsmar, so it's not the surrounding. We really break it down to, to just one. So you'll have people who are kind of over, over back and forth, but you see, do you have those numbers?
Yeah, I see it. Thank you.
So twenty-one are getting home-delivered meals on a daily basis. And there's one adult daycare center, but I, it's, it's, what you're looking at, the number of days is a hundred and forty-one days. And I always look at that, that's a hundred and forty-one days that caregiver's going to work, or if it's a spouse is playing golf, or something that they, that they were able to do. And we have to educate people on that. Sometimes one day a respite a week is, is a lifesaver for people.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Oldsmar Cares.
Hello, everyone. Joanne Fitzpatrick, Director for Oldsmar Cares. I just want to start out by saying thank you all for supporting us always. Everyone knows what we do, mostly food and clothing. So today, I just wanted to kind of give a little information about a couple of the other things that we do because I know you're always out in the community talking to people, and you might not know, and you could direct them to us. So we do do the utility assistance, which Oldsmar Water, TECO. We also have a program called a Patchwork Grant. Sharon Patch was the person that started Oldsmar Cares. She was a pastor at United Methodist Church twenty-five years ago. And her husband Jim, he met someone that needed some extra help, and they put some money together, and that became the Patchwork Grant. And so right now, people can apply. It's a once-in-a-lifetime thing. They can come to me, apply, and if they just need some help. The last Patchwork Grant we did this month was for a woman that her daughter needed a liver transplant, so she had to be off of work. It was not the kind of job where you get vacation time, and it's like, you're not there, you don't get paid. So anyway, we helped them with the rent, and that's, it's, there's endless reasons why people would need it. So if you are out in the community and you come across someone like that, please send them my way. And anyone have any questions about Oldsmar Cares? I can answer, or I don't want to take up any more time.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. Next, we have Oldsmar Friends of the Arts.
Hi, I'm Kevin Miller, Chairman of Oldsmar Friends of the Arts. I'd also like to introduce our executive director, who didn't get his call on, he's here. I'd like to express our gratitude for the city's continued support towards Opal Theater and the performing arts programs. We greatly appreciate and recognize council members and staff who continue to prioritize the performing arts for our community and our students for the benefit of all involved. We recruit so many people with our programs each year through theater, dance, and carolers group, and we can't do any of this without the city's generous support. We're requesting a donation of eighty-five hundred dollars from the city to support and help us grow our performing arts programs in Oldsmar. Our Opal Theater show productions alone cost twelve to fifteen thousand per year for two shows, covering everything from light and sound rentals, script rights, overnight security, and so much more. The balance is raised through fundraising, and our board is formed of unpaid volunteers. We're dedicated to keeping our performances free for our local residents to enjoy. We provide an important element to our community by offering arts programs with high-quality, free performances for all to enjoy, and for students, no matter the financial status, by keeping monthly tuition lower than almost all of our nearby cities. We do offer tuition assistance for those that need it as well. This continues to help students and families in all walks of life to be a part of these special programs. As an additional asset to the city of Oldsmar, in twenty twenty-four, the theater and dance program supplemented city income totaling over eighty-five hundred dollars received for monthly tuitions. An average of seventy-five percent of students return for the following seasons in theater and dance, so we see firsthand how the students grow each year with confidence and skills that will last them a lifetime. These programs continue to enhance children's lives, engage them by providing a platform to learn social, performance, memorization skills, dance, music, family, and so much more. We look forward to continue to enhance these young students' lives and want to take this time to express our sincere thanks for your continued support. Thank you. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? I don't think so. Friends of the Arts. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I had everything wrote out.
Next, we have Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce Special Event Support.
How you doing? Mark Howe again from the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber. We're asking for the money to help us offset our liability insurance for the events that we do in Oldsmar. As you know, we had a tragic here, what, three years ago? And that more than tripled our liability insurance to do events. So that's what we're asking for is the twenty thousand to help cover, offset the liability insurance. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mark. And last on the list, we have Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Education Foundation.
Good evening, Mayor Gannon, council members. My name is Jason Sanders, President of the Upper Tampa Bay Education Foundation. Sarah McLaughlin could not be here this evening, so you're stuck with me. Otherwise, it would have gotten her to speak for us. Looking for two thousand dollars for the education foundation as part of our STAR grant program. And our STAR grant program is unrestricted funds for schools within our footprint. That goes to them to use in any way they like, and a hundred percent of the donation goes directly to those schools. And you guys get to pick the schools in the footprint, so however you would like to divvy that up for that to go to, we'd be happy to oblige. And that's about all.
Any questions? No, thank you. Thank you very much, Jason. Wow, that was extraordinarily brief of everybody. I think that only took twenty minutes. We've seen it take a lot longer, so thank you for your brevity and your descriptions of your various organizations. Figuratively speaking, of course, that was the easy part. We have a total of sixty thousand dollars. I think, do you have the magic?
Would you like a spreadsheet?
Yeah. If you guys want to take a look at the. I think it's also helpful for the public to see what the requests are all next to each other.
It'll show in a second.
Okay.
Let me zoom a bit.
Yes, thank. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
We're not that old.
I'm a little happy with the zoom. Okay. I think that's better. Thank you. One more. Okay. There we go. Okay. Okay, so obviously, ninety-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars is more than sixty thousand. This is, we're not taking a vote tonight. Anything we reach consensus on will be approved at the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting. But of course, the preference would be to reach a consensus this evening. Would anyone like to start? Don't all raise your hands at once.
I mean, just a quick comment. After attending last year's meeting and, and watching it as, again, it seemed like, and that was a different format, I understand, but there was a lot of line items that council was able to take away from to help with, with this part of the allocation ask. So without that, those funds to take away, it's, I, I, at this point, I don't have any specific ideas, but I just wanted to share, like, last year was a little different in terms of format.
I can give some context to that. Would you like any context? So in years past, we've let the amount of money kind of drive the request, and instead, we're, we're changing it to have the request, you know, drive it. I'm sorry, the request were driving the amount of money. So what we ended up doing is cutting to pieces the council budget to do our business up here. And as, I think the last thing we got rid of were subscriptions and the Wi-Fi, or not the Wi-Fi, the cellular data plan. But there was, there was nothing really left to cut.
Work session lunches, I think.
Yeah, what that went to, the work session lunches.
It was the second year in a row we did it, right?
Yes, so.
The first year, we took away all of our travel budgets.
Yes, the first year, we took away all of our travel budgets. So in other words, sixty thousand dollars i- is really what we have to give without beginning to affect how the clerk's office is able to operate the council budget. So there wasn't, we didn't have the ability to sit during the budgeting process and decide, okay, well, we can pull a little from here and a little from there and a little from here to try to make this pot of money. And instead, we have to, because of the position that the city, and honestly, every city in the county, even the county itself, is in with the amount of money we have to work with, you know, this, this time, and perhaps in the future. I don't, I can't, you know, predict, but the amount of money that we have instead needs to drive, you know, what we do here tonight.
I appreciate that.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
I just want to say to everybody, as you know, this is not an enviable task that we go through. But as we just discussed, what we've been able to do in the past is find money elsewhere on the budget. We, there's no, there's none to find. So there's gonna be, I think, some disappointment, but I believe what we're asking for is understanding because I think the only thing that we can do to get to the sixty is not give all of the money that's being requested. There is another column to pull from. And so just setting those expectations where, well, you know, last year they gave me this, and well, this year, you know, I'm asking for this, and it's only this, and I'm not asking for all that much. And well, this year, you know, I'm asking for this, and it's only this, and I'm not asking for all that much. We understand. I think our first, well, at least my focus is most direct impact on Oldsmar, who has it. And I would think that's where the money is most likely going to go. And we're just going to have to weed out, and I think based on that thesis, if anybody else has another idea, I'm all ears for hearing it. But there's, it's not possible to give everybody what they ask for. So please, everyone, as we go through this discussion, understand that we would love to, we can't. So that's just where we are. That's all I have for now.
I would echo the same. I mean, I have a degree in social work. So I think all of these programs are worthy, and I was not looking forward to this meeting at all. Because I agree that it's, it's not a fun job, but it is our job. And, and I am willing to do it. It's what I was elected for. Sometimes we make the hard decisions. When I was looking at this list, I, I looked at the same thing and actually wrote down the number of people impacted in Oldsmar. Because I had a similar thought to try to maximize our impact for the residents here in Oldsmar. Not just that, but as inflation is happening and hurricane impacts, and it's becoming harder day-to-day for people just with their basic necessities, I would say that's where my focus is. Food, shelter, water, power, basic necessities are harder for people to get elsewhere. So in order to prevent people from sleeping in their car or, you know, like, becoming homeless or houseless, I think that we need to look closely at where exact, what, I want to choose my word. I think all of these are worthy, but like, some of these things are wants and not needs. And I think looking at it in that point of view, filling basic needs, I think, needs to be the priority.
Councilmember Nat?
Couple of comments. I tried to look at this through a few different lenses, and one of them was kind of the impact, kind of the percent impact of that entity to our city. And then the other thing, you know, is kind of knowing what we're walking into tonight of that we have to cut. And there's a couple of different ways to do it, which I'll get to that in a second. But I, I tried to look at the financials to see, like, when we cut, because we know that's what's coming into tonight, or officially next week, how painful would that be to the organization based on their total revenues? Because some of these out here, again, all nor, noble causes, but some have a lot more resources financially than others. And so our contribution represents different percentages towards that overall operating for that organization. So that's something else trying to understand and empathize with. You know, what do we want it, is how, how is the need impacted to our city? You know, how, how, what's the magnitude of the impact? And then, again, how painful would it be that organization if it went to zero effectively? So I, I looked at all that, and you know, again, it does range a lot. Because some of our smaller local entities definitely, I think, rely on what has been given by the city in the past a lot more than others. So I think that's a worthwhile consideration as well as we start to get to the numbers. So obviously, a couple of things that we can do is just say, well, what's the percentage to cut everybody to get, you know, across the board, weighted to get to sixty? Or you start playing with the individual numbers, right? Because you could just say, well, what's the percentage we're over and apply that to all of them and reduce it. That keeps it equivalent, so to say. Otherwise, then as we get into the orchestrating of a little less here and a lot more less here type of activity. So there's something to kind of plant in our heads for when we get to that. That's all I got for now.
Understood. Yes, I had, I had similar thoughts to everything that everyone has expressed. I, what you said about wants and needs particularly resonates with me this year because of the hurricanes and the organizations that we predominantly relied on to literally put things back together. And that included people who were members of those organizations, physically putting people back together, and also the actual organizations that put people's lives back together. I also, you know, it took some time to think about, you know, I've been on council for a while, and this, this used to be, not a while, I mean, Jerry Beaverloin was on much longer than me, but I've been on longer than all of you, so there's that. But, you know, it's important to remember, okay, how, how did we get here? So when this started, this line item, this initially was a way for the city to predominantly fund Oldsmar Cares and Mattie Williams later, and then to essentially get out of the special event business and support the chamber, because we really should not have been, in my opinion, taking on the liability and the overtime of serving hot dogs at Oldsmar Days. And so shifting that entire, and honestly, to date, we still get credit for what appears to be a city event, which is not a city event. You know, it, it's grown, obviously, I mean, essentially quadrupled in the time that I've been up here. There's a lot of new organizations that weren't here when I first got here. And I try to remember the, the lane that government is supposed to be in, right? As opposed to the lanes we would all like to be in. For example, in social work or in the arts or in, you know, whatever it is. We all have special interests and we all have, you know, ways that we would divvy this up. It's important to me to remember, though, that that sixty thousand dollars is not the council's money. That's not our budget to go do whatever with. Those are tax dollars that were given to us that are supposed to be used for running government operations, which, as we all saw a month ago, are about as lean as they can be given the current millage rate. So this, granted, is a small piece of it, probably buy a bat wing mower or something, but this sixty thousand dollars is essentially taking the money from, from the residents and deciding, well, you, you don't get to, you know, have a say in what charitable contributions you might make at the end of the year. Well, we're going to do that for you with this sixty thousand dollars. And to an extent, I understand that, yes, that is governing and that is part of what we do when we allocate money to parks and recreation versus, you know, you know, storm waters, you know, it's, it's all choosing, right? So with that in mind, though, the city itself has reduced the scope of services and, and, or maintained the level of services to what I feel is our absolute core functions. Our capital improvement budget has been thinned to what is essentially emergency projects, things we cannot ignore, we cannot put off. Things that we could ignore or put off got kicked out another year or two, and we are maintaining our essential city services. If we don't raise the millage rate and the current economic conditions continue, it is a strong reality that we will have to either reduce city services. I mean, it's just a math problem. We either have to raise the millage rate eventually or we have to reduce city services. So we can reduce the number of hours at the library, we can close the Cypress Forest Rec Center, we can, but there's no more money to come from, from anywhere. So that's, as I mentioned to Councilman Swager earlier when we first started, that's why we're not doing this in the other way that we used to and the rankings and all that kind of stuff. So with that in mind, I, I am, I am focused on essential services. And I, I would ask that we get started on, on, you know, actual numbers. Does anybody have any actual numbers that they want to share? Or... Valerie says no. Okay. Do you have any actual numbers? Do you have any actual numbers?
Like specifics as to how many people are impacted by?
No, I want to know if you have made a suggested allocation of the sixty thousand dollars.
Well, starting at the top, and forgive me, Kevin, I know you're way back there, but you didn't ask for money last year?
We did not.
Yes, they did. They just didn't get funded.
You didn't get funded, okay.
Yeah, we didn't, we weren't aware of the process schedule and we missed a deadline.
Right, so then this graph a little bit. Okay.
And Vice Mayor, I do, I do appreciate that. I, I want us to keep, as you said, everybody out there has incredibly laudable goals and, and contributions to this community. There is no doubt about that. If we start getting into that, we will all be in tears. Because I would love nothing more than to make sure we fund everybody's organization all the way to every last dollar that you need. Because there are so few people in this world who have the hearts and minds of those in this room who are willing to put aside time, money, effort in their lives to dedicate them to the service of other people. You are all extraordinary and rare, but we need to have this conversation up here.
No, I understand. I would, I would.
And we don't mean offense to anybody out there, please.
My biggest, I'll start. My biggest one is I believe Oldsmar Cares should be awarded the money that they're asking for.
I also had that as well.
We would take the twenty-seven thousand away from the sixty. Andrew Math?
Fifty, thirty-three.
Thirty-three. So for the other seven, there's thirty-three thousand.
I would, I would just jump in in terms of, on the topic of what's essential. I think the only other two that would be considered providing essential services is Mattie Williams and the Meals on Wheels, Mayberryly Care Network, in terms of what their primary purpose is, right? Granted, I'm not saying, you know, a hundred percent, but just, I think that's really the separation. I think the rest are, probably not speaking into the mic, sorry. I think the rest, again, all admirable, but not essential as it relates to the services or the benefit that's provided. They're great. I don't want to see any of them suffer immensely because of not getting anything. But I think that's kind of the dividing line.
Right, I think the issue that I have with that, that's a point well taken, but... Mattie serviced two thousand six hundred and fifty Oldsmar residents by their numbers. Oldsmar Cares, thirteen thousand two hundred and forty-nine. So that's a significant difference when the money amount is only two thousand dollars difference. Everybody understands me there. So my thought when I was looking at this was to cut the request from Mattie Williams, given lesser impact.
Right.
When compared, when compared to the same service provided by Oldsmar Care, same services.
And also accounting for the funding sources that they have in place with Juvenile Welfare Board, City Harbor, and the various other?
Correct. And then with Clearwater for Youth, forgive me. Clearwater for Youth, by their own presentation, has a large enough endowment.
To cover operating, yes.
Covered. So that was another one where I'm like, okay, that's not an essential service for Oldsmar. So I would, I would take that five thousand dollar request away if it was my decision.
Okay, what, what did you, I might have missed Mattie Williams, I'm sorry.
I haven't made a number in my head for Mattie Williams. I just wanted to point out the difference in services provided to specific people.
Okay.
So if we take that five thousand away.
Okay, Kristen, or who's got, who's got the computer? Can you?
That would be zero, but then we still have the same thirty-three.
Yeah, I just want to have some kind of idea.
Right. So I'll just go down the list. So the Holiday Sharing Fund Kids Pedal Power, that's almost directly impacted specifically to Oldsmar.
Are you suggesting a funding at a hundred percent or less?
As it stands right now, I would say a hundred percent, but we asked to run through. So Mattie Williams, I don't want to go all the way down to zero, but we're, we're in a number crunch here, so if it's...
Can we plug it? Can we plug in half of it for now?
I mean, my number, my number was ten.
Ten? Okay, let's start at ten.
From there.
Yeah, just so we got something as a placeholder.
Yeah, I want to see how things start to look.
Put you at forty-three.
The Education Foundation, that goes directly to the schools that we pick, so I would keep that at the two.
I, I agree with that, but to me, I'd love to give the school thousands of dollars every year, of course.
Yeah.
But do we have, we don't, the schools will not suffer without five hundred dollars. I would love to give them grants for everything every year. I just wanted to put that out there. That's just...
I tend to have the same thought. And I think maybe our point of view, Mayor, is shifted because we are both, are involved with Women's Club of Oldsmar, and we see other money shifted into the schools there as well. So we're seeing funding from other avenues going into the schools too. So I think maybe our perspective is shifted.
Can you share a little bit about the Women's Club donation to Oldsmar Elementary and Forest Lakes Elementary? And how we're doing that? Just so I don't talk the whole time.
Sure, yeah, not a problem. So the Women's Club every year, and especially more recently, made sure that we were contributing equally to both elementary schools here. And I believe our number is five hundred dollars, if not a thousand. I think it's five hundred. Because I think we split the amount, because we were giving a thousand dollars directly to Oldsmar Elementary, and then we decided to split evenly between the schools to make sure they were both represented. But then the Women's Club also collects supplies, you know, extra underwear for the kindergartners, those types of things that people who are living in our community bring to the Women's Club. We direct, we directly donate to the school. So we are seeing other avenues where the schools are getting, maybe not the same amount, but they are getting funded.
They're getting small grants that help, yeah. And the reason the Women's Club was able to do that is because the club has been able to generate more money than ever before.
Correct.
But in other words, you know, small grants to the schools are nice, but, you know, governing is choosing, right? So is it two thousand for Education Foundation for Grants? I understand the impact is direct to Oldsmar. Or do we help make sure that, you know, elderly people are getting, you know, essential meals? I understand there's twenty-one people, or twenty-one people for the, excuse me, meals served, four for transportation, and one for adult daycare. I just wanted to bring that up. But please continue. I'm interested in other numbers that you have.
I'm interested in everybody's numbers.
I am as well, but you're kind of on a roll.
Thanks. The, for Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, last year we gave seven thousand. There was two shows. My understanding, there's only one show this year.
Right.
I was advised to speak up here, so I'm, Sooda, I know you hear me talk. But during their presentation, it was mentioned that for two shows, it costs twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. There's only one show.
Right.
So that number, eighty-five hundred, is going to have to come down.
Yeah.
Now, half of seven thousand is thirty-five hundred. So... Dealing with just?
No.
Dealing with just this year, Mayor?
That was...
Because we're going to have to take the charitable requests that we receive next year as well.
Say that one more time?
So just speaking about this year, whether there'll be additional shows in future years is, wouldn't be the concern as to this year's.
No, unfortunately, anything in future years is going to have to be irrelevant. I mean, if we have any sort of weather-related event this year, I, I mean...
I, I hear you.
I'm just going to find some wood to knock on. I understand that, you know, we all would like to have extra money for future years, so, so would the city.
If we, if, if, if we give Meals on Wheels all they're asking for, that, that was to service twenty-six people.
I know.
I understand it's an important service, but it's twenty-six Oldsmar residents.
They also, that's only, their request is only a tenth of a percent of their revenue.
Correct.
Right.
More or less. That was, you know, it's, we're looking at older tax returns of what was provided versus maybe the most recent one, so...
Because if we take away the grant to the schools, then that would, we give... Because then essentially it would be giving Neighborly Care Network 6,500, given the Chamber 10, and cutting out the schools, then we'd be done.
Will you try that for me?
No, 6,500 on the news, please. The only other thing to do would be take more away from Mattie Williams, and we've already topped it by 15,000.
Yeah, that or partially fund Holiday Sharing Fund for, I mean, it's not as big of a number, but.
And then you could split, if we, if we go 1,500 for Kids Pedal Power and we go 1,500 to the Education Foundation, we could do it that way. But is there some, is there something that you want more of? Anybody would want?
I was looking at the breakdown that Mattie Williams and her neighborhood family centers give for their, their stuff. Because they, 10,000 was directly to direct assistance for financial need, utility assistance, temporary housing, transportation assistance, unexpected medical, so like temporary funds. But then another 8,000 was to help them with their growing needs at the food pantry, and they said they have a 20% growth of Oldsmar residents visiting them. And I can only imagine that number's going to get bigger.
The other.
I totally get, I get where you're coming from completely.
We've just got to do the numbers. There's got to be a way to do it, but that's, it doesn't.
I know, that doesn't make our job easier. I mean, want to be fair about like if they're, kind of what you were saying, like the direct impact to residents, like if we're, I don't want to cut them too much and then their food pantry can't buy, like, it's just hard for me to imagine. I've never been hungry, but there are people that are, so that's where my priorities are.
Can you take Neighborly Care Network to 5,000 and put that 1,500 toward Mattie Williams? Because I, I understand that, you know, the federal government does fund Meals on Wheels, and they're looking for a 10% match, but.
That's what I wrote, I wrote down Fed Government when, during the presentation.
Councilman Smoggy, you're pretty quiet over there. You okay?
Oh, I'm great. I guess one question or comment for the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Education Foundation. Those are scholarship funds, correct?
They're not scholarship funds. They're called STAR grants, and what they are is sort of, you know how a lot of times schools get money maybe from the county or different organizations, and they say, here's this check, but you have to buy iPads with it. And let's say the school has a billion iPads and they don't really need to buy iPads. So what the Education Foundation does is they, they provide just a check to the schools, and they don't put any strings on it. So let's say they, you know, the principal or whatever the administration decides, you know, we need more basketballs for PE. Or there was one year when Forest Lakes wanted to get a run club started, and, you know, some after-school activity, things like that, because often the money they do get is encumbered in some way. But the Education Foundation, in a way, is kind of a a pass-through in that the money goes from us to the foundation, to the, to the school. So, you know, I don't know all of the history of that. There's, Jerry Beaverlin probably does, or Jerry Peruzzi probably does, or how, how that all happened, that there is an Education Foundation, but that, that is my understanding of how it works. There are, I think, other recipients, and they do need some other donations to increase the amount that they give to our schools and other schools, but this is the specific donation from the city. So in other words, I don't think that the $2,000 makes up the entire budget for their, what they give away. I think that what we do give goes straight through them. They're not taking any administrative fees. There's no organizational cost, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, they said, I think in their letter, said they had 27 awards planned for the upcoming year.
I definitely can't hear you.
Sorry.
Are you talking into the microphone thingy?
Yes, I believe their letter said they have 27 grants planned for the year.
27?
I'll just add, add on to that Education Foundation discussion. You know, as we said, this, a lot of, you know, each of our revenue and the school district's revenue, a lot of that is made up by taxes, right? And in my personal opinion, I think probably statewide education is underfunded. And so while I would really like to see us do what we can as a city to help, if, if you as a voting, registered voter think education is underfunded, then you should talk to the county school board officials and have them raise their milled rate.
Fun fact, the, the school, your millage to the school, I think we discovered this today. You pay more in your millage and your property tax bill to the school district than you do to the county.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Most people, so, fun, fun fact.
So go, go, go to a school board meeting, tell them. Raise it up. So just, sorry, so I'm fine with that being zero. That being said. Are we sitting at 60 right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't see too well from.
Whether or not you want to show, that's what.
Just kind of giving everybody a little bit of time to let it sink and, and look.
Sure.
At these different numbers. I know nobody likes anything that they're looking at. Literally no one in the room.
Yeah, I mean, just one comment I would share is if we all individually allocated the funds, they would all be different. Right?
Sure.
And meaning for personal interest or personal reasons. But as you had mentioned earlier, Mayor, this is, you know, a governing body decision. So it is not an individual preference by any means, right?
I mean, you can certainly advocate for your individual preference. There's just a lot of inertia, you know, when it comes to, for me, there's a lot of inertia when it comes to doing this math problem every year, because I go back to the core functions of government, why we have this money in the first place, whether we should even, I've even asked myself why we even do this. Just because I sometimes think it creates more heartache and uncertainty in the budgets of all of these organizations. You know, some of which might be depending on us and then feel like they can't depend on us. And I don't want to create the impression that any organization can 100% depend on us every year just because our core function, fortunately or unfortunately, is not charitable giving. It is to provide city services. We have it on the wall. And, you know, I've, I've tried to take some of the emotion out of it. I've tried to think of this in many different ways. As Councilman Knapp suggested, you know, do you just lop off certain organizations that, you know, aren't, that weren't a part of this in the beginning? Do you just fund Mattie Williams, Oldsmar Cares, and the Chamber to put on Oldsmar Days, and that's it? You know? And do we leave it at that? You know, it's just so that we get back to what the purpose of this was. Because, you know, the number, as we've seen every year, it goes up every year. Of course it does. Everybody needs funds. These are all incredible organizations who are doing great things. And, you know, I would love to give everybody the money that they need to continue doing those things, but here's where we're at. But you, you make a good point in that, you know, this is a, an attempt to gain consensus. I don't think that the consensus would be to simply put zeros for certain organizations. I don't think that that's ever been suggested. But then again, I don't, I don't even know how helpful it is, because as, again, as we go into future years, there has to be a discussion on increasing the millage rate or decreasing city services. It just can't, it can't continue to go forward. And I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate necessarily for us to sit up here and allocate these funds. I mean, that's just my personal view, but again, we have to have consensus here. And I'm going to, I'm going to stop. Does anybody have an issue with what's up on the screen right now? Does anybody want to continue to, to talk about what's on the screen or take a few minutes to just look at it?
My only thought with the way the numbers are now, it seems like we've compromised for everything except Oldsmar Cares and Holiday Sharing Fund. Everything else we've knocked down. And the question is, do we want to fit one more thing in? Like, because, I mean, you argue between kids getting bikes or getting sponsored for soccer camp. You know, like those, I seem fairly equal to me. Do we set that in half so that we can get almost everybody in? With the understanding that the Education Foundation is essentially taking city money and giving it directly to the school, which Councilmember Knapp said has already discussed, that we are getting a good portion of our taxes taken for, directly to allocate to our schools.
Thoughts?
It's.
I know there's a discussion about the, the bikes going directly to kids in Oldsmar versus.
Oh, no, they do. All the bikes go to kids in Oldsmar.
I just mean as far as like looking between Clearwater for Youth. I think that they, when they broke down.
I mean, see, for me, I know Neighborly Care Network include, is 34677 Oldsmar. So it's not incorporated Oldsmar.
Okay.
When we think of who we're getting our, who that 60 grand came from, does not include 34677 Oldsmar. So, you know, if it's me, I love bikes. I want to give bikes. I will write a check out of my personal funds to give bikes to kids in Oldsmar. But if we're talking about city funds, to me, you know, the, the Holiday Sharing Fund, Kids Pedal Power.
Goes to Mattie Williams.
Better belongs with Mattie Williams to, I know those kids want bikes, but I think their families need food, shelter, and utility assistance more.
I would, I would tend to agree with that.
You know, and I'm not, Kristen, I'm not saying to move anything. I'm just trying to explain my reasoning in, in the way that I think of, of this. I'm open to everyone's suggestion, and that's a great, that's a great point. You know, I've, I totally understand it.
So you take the three grand and move it to Mattie?
I'm not suggesting any moves. I'm, I'm just.
I would suggest that.
Bringing up other considerations.
It's been suggested.
I mean, I.
Do you want to see it, and then I can always put it back? Oh.
What in the world?
I don't know.
Excel. What?
Oh, no.
We're going to call Garrett on you.
I know, we don't have Garrett today.
I'm going to call Garrett.
I'm sorry.
No, it's like created a function for you somehow.
It sure has. Can I go back?
Yeah.
And then again, I can put it back. Yep, we're not going to do that.
You better stop pushing buttons.
Quit while you're ahead.
Yeah, just put a zero, and then it turns it into. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I mean, at least this way, Oldsmar Friends of the Arts gets something, the Chamber gets something, and then the other three that are getting something are direct impacts on the care for citizens.
I don't, I don't know if.
I mean, both of you are right. This is food and utilities and rental assistance. So I, if consensus is necessary, I'm comfortable with the numbers as they show right now.
Same.
I'm comfortable with where they are too.
I'd prefer a portion would be left for the Holiday Sharing Fund, and what amount that is. I don't, 500, 1,000, but.
Where would you pull it from?
The Mattie Williams, where it was just moved.
No, I would pull it from.
We could take 1,000 from Meals on Wheels and give it to you. Bikes.
That would work.
Yeah.
I don't like it, but I would concede. I mean.
Everybody's conceding tonight.
I know.
So I mean, there's nothing you can do. I'm not being facetious. That's what I mean. That's why this is such a, don't let me do it.
I know.
Kristen, can you move the, the bikes?
Yes.
4,000 on Meals on Wheels.
If we need consensus, I'm comfortable with this.
As am I.
I think I feel the same as everyone where I'm not happy, but I, I, I think this is as fair as it's going to get. I mean, I, I don't know. Is it fair? No.
No.
Like.
You're never going to find, you're never going to find the one that's the perfect one.
And we're all, I mean, as the mayor said, this, we're allocating taxpayer funds that, that's questionable whether we should even be doing this. So I, I feel comfortable with where we are. I.
I believe that leaves you, Mayor.
I'm significantly torn because I know the budget of Oldsmar Friends of the Arts is significantly impacted by the amount of money they receive here. But, you know, it's, it's difficult for me, because I know, you know, we got between 20 and 35 kids who participate in that program, and then, you know, you've got Meals on Wheels. You've got 25 seniors looking for food.
That's, I agree, there's no good answer.
I know, I know. But I also recognize that Meals on Wheels does have governmental funding.
Yeah, they're, they're in the.
Aside from us.
Ask versus what they've got coming in. They're in the best position.
I think we'd all be elated if we could get more money to Oldsmar Friends of the Arts. I think it was just the basic understanding that there's only one show this year, so that's where we started with it. But we haven't adjusted it up. But I also agree that the one place we could, would need to take it from would be Meals on Wheels. So if we took 1,500 from Meals on Wheels, gave it to Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, at least that's 5,000.
Yeah.
So, more. Kristen, can you do that, so we can see it?
Mm-hmm.
Bring that down to 2,500, and then Friends of the Arts up to 5,000.
See, I think, I mean, I, I think it still misses the mark, though, because, you know, Kids' Pedal Power is providing, and, and, you know, an entertainment. It's just really upsetting.
So you remove the 1,000 from Kids' Pedal Power and push that to?
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, if, if Kids' Pedal Power is providing bikes, and Oldsmar Friends of the Arts is providing, you know, a similar entertainment, you know, as far as a percentage of their budget, you know, should it be similarly, the, the lack of funding be similarly borne by Friends of the Arts and Kids' Pedal Power? You know, this is the, this is the tough part, because these two organizations, $500 literally means a difference.
For sure.
But I, I would, I would.
So something like 2,000 to Kids' Pedal Power and 4,000 to Oldsmar Friends of the Arts?
Yeah.
It gets some bikes, and it gets funds to the program. Bad enough, obviously, but.
Yeah. Would you like to see that?
4,000 there, and then 2,000 for Pedal Power.
You have my consensus.
You want to ask everybody for consensus? Do that?
And just, it's hard.
Yeah.
If you think about it for too long, you're gonna change your mind.
Yeah, you think about it, it's, it's.
I'm pushing it around, yeah. It's your cup, babe.
No, I think this, this reflects a priority towards basic needs, while also still recognizing that the arts and community events have value. That we, we want to prioritize basic necessities, but also ensure that, you know, some of these organizations don't literally die. And recognize the, you know. Oldsmar Days is, I mean, people look at that number and they don't understand sometimes, but, I mean, do you want to have Oldsmar Days or not?
Right.
And the answer for me is gonna be yes. So, I, I'm okay with the allocation as it, as it is.
Me, too.
Do I have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for being here today. Please forgive my forlorn attitude. It's a really hard thing to do.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I might have some future discussions with the city manager about this line item. I just, so, in other words, here's, you know, we have, um. We don't necessarily have the ability as a city to give, like, a direct organ, allocation of funds without, you know, some kind of agreement, you know, we can't, so that's why it comes into this charitable donation thing, but I don't know if there's a better way to do this. We've tried, you know, i- initially, it was just, we decide, and then we tried to create a process to make it more fair, and that process was to request applications, background information, financial information, 990s, so we could weigh how much of the money was staying in Oldsmar, how much of the money was being spent on overhead, how much, and, and in the process of becoming more fair, it's become more complicated and more difficult to decide. And I understand that certain parts of our jobs are difficult, but I do struggle with, and I, I, I just, it's hard, because I don't know what the average, or if you ask 10 different taxpayers in the city of Oldsmar where they would allocate their money, if they would agree with this, and that bothers me, because that's our job. So, I'm, you know, just percolating on this. I do prefer the way that we did it this year, where we're having the amount of money drive this work session, as opposed to the amount of the requests. But I think we've said enough on this particular topic. I thank everybody for coming tonight, and I apologize that everybody will probably leave disappointed. Before we leave, I did want to do a quick council comments. If anybody had anything, I just had an announcement, but I don't want to, unless anybody has anything. So, the city manager and I had an important meeting today with our Pinellas County School Superintendent, Kevin Hendricks. And there had been rumors in the community, with teachers, with administrators, there was a concern that Oldsmar Elementary School was going to close, and that it would be collapsed into and merged with Forest Lakes Elementary School. In other words, there would be no more Oldsmar Elementary School, and all of those students would somehow be absorbed into Forest Lakes Elementary School. I am very relieved to tell you that that is absolutely false. That is not happening, so if you hear anybody spreading that, or questioning, is Oldsmar Elementary closing, the answer is no. There have been, you know, n- news articles about, you know, lack of funding for certain schools, and in January, is Oldsmar Elementary gonna close? The answer is no, okay? So, I'm, I was very relieved to hear that, obviously. With that, I didn't, I didn't have anything else, I'm just a ball of sunshine tonight. You guys good? Okay?
Very good.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, this does not require a vote, we are adjourned, thank you.